Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, February 8th at 7:00 PM. And tonight we have three committee meetings. The first of which will be the Finance and Personnel Committee that's chaired by Council Member Crowell and joined by Council Members Reisner, Kotzis, and Smedley.
Thank you, President Isley. Excuse me. We have a number of items on our agenda tonight. And we will start with city vacancies. As I believe everyone is aware, we requested the city administration to have council review any vacancies that they had, the city had opened that they would like to fill. And the city administration has been very good about doing this with us. And they have a number of vacancies they'd like to put forward for review. The first one is there are currently three vacant maintenance tech positions. And the city would like to hire two of those open positions. One of the former MTs switched, took another position, became labor supervisor. And there are currently, I believe, about nine open positions in EPW. So this would be filling two of three. Are there any questions? I know Mr. Pyle is on the call tonight. Yeah, Mayor Patterson?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment to make, and that is, as council is aware, as the staffing ordinance came forward, vacancies typically in a non-COVID timeframe, the city can fill those vacancies as they come available, as long as they are on the staffing ordinance. We have been doing our due diligence through 2020 and now into the beginning of 2021 of really looking closely at vacancies, trying to be as fiscally conservative as possible with revenue coming in. And so just as a reminder to those watching, this is something that we decided in, under COVID-19, to keep council apprised of vacancies and critical needs as we move forward. So this is just so that council has a level of knowledge as to what vacancies we do intend to fill. And those are critical, these are critical vacancies as they've, and we've held off for a while, but we're at that point in time to where we, we do need to start filling some of the vacancies within the already approved staffing ordinance.
Thank you for that information. Yes, Council Member Reisner?
I just want to say, I agree with the mayor and the city's need to fill these positions. But one thing that's worrying me as this epidemic drags on and we do not fill positions in departments, the institutional memory disappears. So as new people come in, they don't benefit from the knowledge of older employees who know the systems, who know the ropes. It's almost like an apprenticeship. There's a breaking in period where you have to bring new employees up to speed. And if there's no one there who really knows what the systems are all about, they're at a serious disadvantage, and so is the city. We're behind the, behind the curve there. So I think despite our financial woes at the moment, public safety service and health are mandatory here to get these people in.
Mayor?
Just to assure the listening audience tonight and you, Council Member Reisner, I don't 100% disagree with what you're saying. But I would state that we have a lot of depth in our departments, in particular the ones that we have need right now. So there is enough seniority to where that knowledge can be transferred on. But you're correct, but we're not at the point to where we're losing all of our senior or even midterm employees to where we're having a brain drain. That's not the situation at all right now. Right now, it's a matter of getting enough people in critical positions, in particular our maintenance technicians, to move forward. Chief Pyle?
Yeah, I echo the mayor's sentiment. I would say that we've been cognizant of the very issue you've mentioned, Councilperson Reisner. And I would say for the vacancies we're talking about and bringing before council, we've pushed right up against the edge of that limit to say that if we don't fill the positions, we will start suffering from the attrition without the institutional knowledge. So now, some departments have it that permanently address through field training and things like that, like the police and fire departments are rather buffered against an issue like that. So we are aware of it and have been contemplating it the whole time.
Thank you, Chief Pyle. Any other questions on the maintenance tech positions? Seeing none, I'll move on. Another position. Sorry. Going too fast.
Councilmember Kotzis?
Yep, thank you. I'll make my hand bigger next time.
You actually slipped off my screen, but let me make my thing bigger.
So this question's for administration. So, you know, I know the size of our, of our, of our employment workforce, you know, we always tend to have open positions. In normal times, what would that, you know, percentage or amount of open positions be versus where we're at right now? And just ballpark, I don't...
So I've had that conversation with our human resources director, Ron Lucas. At last count, we were about 19 positions, full-time open positions. He thinks that's about twice as what we would normally carry. Also, the time span that we would carry those vacancies has been a lot longer. It's not unusual to have five to 10 vacancies at any given time, but they get filled much more rapidly than what we've done with the pandemic, during the pandemic.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the MTs? Moving on to another position of solid waste inspector. We had a previous solid waste inspector transfer over to arts, parks, and recreation that leaves an opening in the solid waste in the code office. We would really need a person in this position by mid-March. This is a revenue position in terms of waste tickets for the city. And the SSD and mayor are asking for a review of a solid waste inspector. Any questions or comments? Member Claude Felder?
Just a clarification question, if you don't mind providing a little more detail. Is the solid waste inspector like one of the litter control officers, or is this a different position?
Chief, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, it is a, it is what you colloquially call litter officer.
Okay, thank you.
The patrol on the weekends and issue the trash tickets to the house parties and things like that. And right now, they're only covering every other weekend because there are two, one each weekend. And so, so, and then, you know, the spring season's going to kick up and parties aren't necessarily outside, but they're inside and there's still a lot of waste from the parties that are happening inside. So it's, it's not only a revenue concern, but also a litter concern and a health concern. So...
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, as the Service Safety Director indicated, it's solid waste and litter control officers is what their titles are. And if you think about it, they are critical in terms of some of the safety and health issues that we see, especially within the rental units, the rental unit areas, whether they're multi-unit or former single-family homes that are converted into rental units. It's critical that they're out inspecting those as well to make sure that they aren't becoming health hazards in terms of critters that we don't want in people's backyards or rummaging through their trash and strolling the streets of Court Street.
Yes, and as we get towards the end of the spring semester and move out, this position is very, very important for the city. Okay, and moving on to the last vacancy on our list tonight is a city electrician. We did lose a city electrician sadly, Mr. Garan, and the city is asking to hire a replacement for, for a city electrician. Any specific questions? Yes, Member Smedley?
A question, just a comment, just that based on the responses that I've heard from administration and the response to Member Kotzis' question, I'm confident these are positions that are necessary and the administration wouldn't be proposing them. There wasn't a dire need. So appreciate their thoughtfulness in this really challenging time and would support these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Smedley. Okay, any other comments on the vacancies for review? Seeing none. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, which is appropriations transfers. We have an interesting situation in that the Richland Avenue Passenger Pedestrian Passageway Project, which is substantially complete, does have a, does require a final appropriation for an amount of $13,000, which is for a hand railing. This was, this work has not been completed, so it's not a prior year bill, but the construction engineering firm discovered they had this outstanding invoice. The project has not been done, but the money had not been appropriated. So this is $13,000 to complete a hand railing for the Richland Avenue Pedestrian Passageway Project. Are there any questions about appropriating this amount? Yes, Member Reisner?
Just to clarify, make sure everybody understands, this is just an appropriation for the money. It's not cutting a check and mailing it to the company to pay them. That's up to the administration.
That's correct.
Hopefully, the job is done and approved, which I know you guys will, so...
Yes, Member Claude Felder?
I can't say that I've been in the market for hand railings lately, but $13,000 sounds somewhat expensive. So I just wonder, what is the size of this? Or is this a really elegant one, or?
No, I do not have the answer to that question, Member. Mayor Patterson, do you?
I don't have an answer as to the elegant nature of the rail. I don't think it is elegant. I think that it's just a custom rail to fit with the project. And anytime you're having to make something that is built to suit, it's going to have a cost associated with it. So I can get more details if you're interested.
And my thought would be that it might be both sides. And if it's the entire length of the passageway, it's quite a ways, so...
I can get you more info. Good question, Member Claude Felder. Yeah, Member Smedley?
Thanks, Member Crowell. So is the hand rail, I guess I need clarification too on where it's going? The path underneath in the tunnel or where exactly is it going? And I assume this is for accessibility reasons, which I appreciate, of course, to help folks make their way through.
Another good question. I don't have the answer. I don't believe it's in the passageway itself, but I'm not sure exactly where it goes.
Well, we'll reach out to Jessica Dine and get that information. I didn't get into the details with her, really just kind of focused on the process of appropriating the money, when she pointed out that it was an oversight, that the work hadn't been completed and had to be scheduled and that kind of thing. So we just got the price of it and put it in the process to get it funded.
Claude Felder?
I'm curious, after the question about where it would be located, if this would be a railing that would go over the, whatever you call the thing that the cars go on, that arc that they go over, would that then inadvertently encourage people to walk on that when we're trying to get them to walk through the tunnel?
Yeah, yes, no. It is not on the roadway. The roadway has no pedestrian through fare at all. This would be either steps or along the walkway itself. So we'll get you that information. We'll certainly get you how much railing we're talking about, as well as where that railing is located, whether it's along a pathway. And that's likely the case. I don't recall if there's steps which would require a railing as well, but I'll get all this information for council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, and moving along in our agenda, we have a note renewal for our parking meters. And as everyone I'm sure is aware, we have not been having the revenue come into our parking fund for a good, solid year. So this has become a bit complicated. But we would like to appropriate $14,100 to the parking garage fund. And then advance transfer $100,000 from the general fund to the parking garage fund in order to pay this upcoming note renewal. We would like to establish a payment schedule where we're paying the general fund back for this, for this transfer of funds. And so the auditor's office has recommended at least $5,000 each year, beginning next year, until the balance is repaid. This is unfortunately a movement of money that is necessary due to the lack of revenue we've been receiving. Yes, Auditor Hekt, great to see you.
Thank you, Member Crowell. Yeah, just to add what you said, you're exactly right. We have, these are renovations that were done a few years ago to the parking garage. And we have a set amount that we have to pay off on that. It's not as flexible as some of our other ones. But anyway, we budgeted $161,000 and we need $175,100 for that payment plus interest. And yes, we are allowed to use what we call general obligation funds, tax dollars that go into the general fund for other funds. However, we have to be extremely careful not to subsidize proprietary funds like water, sewer, and parking garage. And so, so we are letting the parking garage fund borrow the money, as Member Crowell said. It's not something we do very often, but we have done in the past. And the wording in the ordinance, Debbie has worked really hard with Leanna on that, using two ordinances from the past when we've done that. The auditors prefer us to have some kind of payback schedule. The amount can be very small. The last time we did it, we paid it back much earlier than what we put in an ordinance. But at least we had a guideline for minimum payments, and that's what our payment is set up for that. So the $100,000 loan in the parking garage fund is, we actually have two loans, you know, coming up for a parking garage. But one of them is paid for out of the general fund. But anyway, part of the $100,000 loan will be used for other things. But the main thing is to get some money in there so that we can transfer enough into the parking garage debt fund to make our payment. Does that make sense? If anybody has any questions?
No, it's clear. Member Kotzis?
Yes, thank you. And, you know, and this just goes back a short, short while ago. I know we just, just readjusted the fees for monthly parking. I guess my question is, are we, is there forecasting, is there anticipation of, I mean, I understand the situation that we're currently in, but I just didn't know if there was any, any type of budget runs to see what, what this might, what this funding stream might look like in the, in the near to longer-term future?
Yes, Auditor?
Well, according to the deputy auditor, and I'm not sure where she got this information or just looking at our records, it, we've had a good, a good amount of revenue in the parking garage so far this year. And so we all know a lot of that has to do with having students in town. The problem is, we don't know what will happen moving forward. And so we need to go ahead and, and, you know, make sure we have the money in there now for this upcoming loan payment and then move from there. But she did say, and I don't know if anybody else in the administration has followed this, that, that we, you know, our revenue has been pretty good so far this year.
Mayor?
You know, part of what we're anticipating as well, Member Kotzis, is that as we see more and more vaccine getting out there and into arms, just last Friday, the Athens City County Health Department vaccinated 1,100 individuals, primarily K through 12. But I think we, we can certainly expect more of that as we move forward. And as that happens, that's when we'll start to see again an uptick in people utilizing the parking garage. And council last, you know, at the last regular session, council moved forward the ordinances when it comes to uptown events. I'm not holding my breath on uptown events, but again, that's, as council just, you know, did by passing those ordinances, it's making sure that we're anticipating movement as we move forward in time to get through this pandemic. So, you know, it's possible that when we look at third quarter and beyond, that we'll continue to see a rise. Some of it's predicated for sure upon what Ohio University does with instruction next fall. But so that's basically what we're tracking, Member Kotzis. It's a great question. I don't think any of us have lived through a pandemic before, so it's, we're kind of building this plane as we're flying it.
Hopefully, once in a lifetime. And, and we're on second read on the, on the street closures.
Thank you. See, I'm rushing things through. You know, for me, every day just rolls right into the next. So yeah, thank you, Member Kotzis.
Chief Pyle, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just a couple notes on potential revenue. You know, anecdotally speaking, the mayor and I both see a lot more people in the downtown area, a lot more younger students. So people are coming back to town. The numbers today, if you saw from the health department, there were only nine new cases. I'm hoping that's accurate. So that's a positive thing. And then the new rates for the rental spaces and the additional rental spaces is now in effect. And we're sorting out some, you know, just a few things with the permit system and the county's space leasing. And, and then we'll consider leasing out the other additional, would leave approximately 81, I think, spaces that we could lease out on a monthly basis, those hunting licenses that council approved in December. And so that should all help bring parking back into the parking garage once we get that rolling. It'll take a month or two, but we'll get that rolling. We were actually on tap to hammer down some details on the permit system last week, and the company had to cancel a meeting due to COVID infections in their staff. So, so we'll get that on track just as soon as they can.
Kotzis, Member Kotzis?
I'm sorry, and just one more clarification. Those, those annual permits, do they, do they happen on, on our, on our calendar year?
No, they're, they're monthly. The way we would set them up is people would do it monthly.
Okay.
And it's, but it's guaranteed income, so that would be a good thing. You know, it's whether they utilize the space or not, they'd be paying for it. So, and by the way, I checked out this for a second to get ahold of Jessica, and I have some answers for the railing whenever it's appropriate to give you that information.
President Isley, may he do that now? You're muted.
I think, I think that's fine. Yep.
Please go ahead, SSD, Pyle.
So with regard to the passageway railing, the railing is for two stairwells or two stairways. Jessica did note the length, but it was substantial. This is customized US steel. It's all powder coated. The cost includes all the manufacturing, the coating, the shipping, and the installation, the hotels, the whole nine yards. It covers everything. So that's why it's, it's rather pricey, but it is for two stairwells going into the passageway.
Great, thank you for that information.
Yeah, thanks for getting that so quickly. And thanks to Jessica.
Okay, any other questions on the parking meters, that revenue shift, the fund amounts shifting? Okay, we'll move on to income tax revenue. To remind everyone, last summer, we passed an ordinance removing 1% of income tax revenue allocation that normally went to the Transportation Assistance Fund. The reason why we did that was because HABCAP had received a $2 million grant that would cover our match through 2020. But we now need to move that 1% back. So we, we did decrease the, the general fund from, from 74% to 73%. Or we increased, excuse me, that 1% up to 74%. And we need now to reverse that to return that 1% allocation to the Transportation Assistance Fund. And then the general fund allocation will return to 73%. That's Transportation Assistance Fund 214. Any comments on the income tax revenue shifting? Anything to add, Auditor Hekt?
Hi. I don't think so. I think that's about what it was. The 1% that was designated for that fund several years ago seems to have been the right amount. And so that would be my recommendation is to go with that. It was nice to have that last year. Too bad, you know, we're back to the other this year. But it's not a huge amount, just enough to keep our transportation fund going.
Thank you. I will note to council that we will be asking for suspension for this. The auditor's office would like to have this completed by the end of February. And we only have one more regular council meeting in this short month of February. So we will be looking to suspend the rules for that next week. Okay, moving on. The auditor's office has asked for an authorization to reduce appropriations. We, you may also remember, gave the auditor this authority in, in June of 2020. And the auditor's office is asking for this again through April of 2021. And this is giving them, giving the auditor and her staff the authority to really maintain our budget in a sound and, in a sound way. I know, Auditor, that in the, in the June appropriation, or the June ordinance, we specified sort of amounts, but I don't know if that will also be done in this?
Well, we could do it that way. We did that in June, and then in August, we did it without amounts. We had, I don't know, the Service Safety Director, Pyle, was in on that. We probably had about 10 different funds or account lines that we reduced for that one. I'm not sure where we're going to land this time. I do know that some of the revenue, basically, we get a budget and we look at the revenue and we project it to cover the budget to begin with. But we know that some of this revenue is not going to come in. So for me to go in and reduce those revenue amounts, you know, projected revenue amounts, they can't go below what our appropriations are. And so we're going to, I think everybody understands how that works. So... So the appropriations have to come down to be less than what we, our certified resources are gonna be. So, um, we would like to just be a general one. We would actually have a list of it that we could share. Um, and so we can do it either way. Uh, it gets a little cumbersome in an ordinance to list, uh, a lot of account lines like, like that, but, um, that's why at the end of the year, you know, we, um, uh, have been getting an ordinance to reduce that for the year end, and we don't list every single one of them, not that we don't have a record of that. But like I said, it, it can be kind of cumbersome, and, um, we, we would have it. Uh, it's just, uh, I guess it's be up to council if they want it in the ordinance or not. Um, mostly, we haven't done it that way. We did do it that one way last summer. You know, things are different now, so I guess, um, I could leave that up to you. It can get to be a lot of them. Some of them, we aren't necessarily reducing very much, but we have to, because we know the, um, uh, some of the smaller funds, the revenue is, is limited, uh, the resources, and we know it's not gonna come in, and, um, you know, things like that. So, um, I would just like to start our year off right without, um, a, a budget, you know, department heads and supervisors and administration, everybody, council included, not thinking that our revenue is necessarily gonna be higher than what it is. I really, you know, I don't want it to be projected to be higher than what we think will come in, because, um, you know, things are so different. Uh, in the past, often it comes in higher than we even think sometime, most of the time, but that's probably not the case now. So, um, so we'd like to get it adjusted for the first quarter. That's why I asked it to go through the end of April, so that after the first quarter, we have time to put that through council, you know, and, or to, you know, adjust it as we move on through the year. So I guess I'll leave that up to council. Um, I, I don't know how many account lines, we've found several already that need to be reduced, but, um, um, you know, I, I don't know.
Okay, ma- mayor, you wanna add to that? Uh, sure. You know, if council is, is, um, is comfortable with this, I think maybe a good path forward is, is a blanket, um, reduction. The, we have a, a mayor auditor meeting, you know, once a week where we discuss issues like this, and then we can certainly brief council or bring it forward as a communication during regular sessions that this is what is happening as we're moving forward with having to make some adjustments. It would just be smoother and easier, but again, it's council's decision as to how we move forward, whether you want it au la carte, or whether you'd like something that is, is uh, more general, but with reports coming to council as this is happening.
Thank you, mayor. Not that we won't know that, and I have sent big, you know, spreadsheets of information to council in the past, even when we didn't list it in the ordinance. Um, but, um, as I said, it's, I, I'll leave it up to you whether you're, you know, satisfied with getting the information, or prefer to have every, you know, account line listed separately in the ordinance.
Yeah, I was gonna add that the, uh, auditor's office has, has said that they would discuss these reductions with council and, and the mayor in the meeting. It would just be streamlined things and make it a little smoother to have this, or, uh, this authority passed. Member Smedley?
Thanks, member Crow. I'd be comfortable with more of a high-level, uh, review presented to council or shared with council. I don't think we need, um, the granular details. Unless there was something significant that administration or the auditor wanted to share, I, I feel comfortable with more of that high-level review for, for us and for the general public.
Member Reisner or Kotsis, any input on?
Well, I'm just, just thinking that if we, uh, specified, uh, each individual, uh, line and fund that would need to be reviewed, if by some fluke, a couple of lines were left out of the ordinance, would that then make it difficult to go back and, uh, adjust the appropriations for the ones that were missed?
Yes, it would. That would, yeah. Be, be a new ordinance if we were past our deadline.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a good question. Okay, um, so we'll see, uh, that coming forward next week. Um, any more questions off the committee or anyone else? All right, great, thank you. Moving on to our last item, the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project. Um, we need to amend, uh, last year's ordinance 06320, uh, to remove $800,000, uh, which was an authorized expenditure from the issue two fund, and add that same amount, um, to the street rehabilitation fund, which is the, the fund, uh, from which the loan repayment, uh, for the Stimson Avenue project will be made. Um, this, uh, item, um, was a little more complicated than, um, uh, than I was initially, um, understanding, but I, we had some, um, uh, some helpful emails to me, and I appreciate that from everybody for, uh, uh, for explaining, uh, this to me, but I believe it's, um, if I understand it correctly, it is, uh, really this, uh, transferring of, uh, the money to be in the, the proper, uh, account line of 572, transaction code 500. Um, does, uh, anybody in the city administration want to, um, add anything else to this? Yes, auditor?
Um, sure. This, um, actually just came up recently. Um, Heather in my office noticed some things going on. Uh, she went to Leanna, and they contacted EPW, and, um, this is just, um, these are our monies, pass-through type monies, or monies we were awarded for this project, 400,000 from OPWC and 400,000 from ODOT. And, um, we actually have received a bill, um, it, it's short notice, this really just came to my attention today, but, um, that we would like, we would like this to move through, uh, council in February so that we could, you know, stay up to date on our bills. But, um, it, it's money that's coming to the city, and for some reason in the budget this year, it was budgeted 800,000 in 590, which is an issue one or two fund. And, um, we, um, we use that for these kinds of grants and things that, um, you know, it's not necessarily issue one or two, issue two funds anymore, but, um, the thing is, according to, um, ordinances from last year that the deputy auditor, uh, looked at, the money has, has all been paid and budgeted out of 572, which is the street fund. So rather than have this money, um, you know, the revenue and, and appropriations in 590, we'd just like to do it out of 572 where everything else is. And so, um, what we need to do is adjust the budget and, um, decrease the 800,000 in 590, and then increase it in 572. So i- it's just really a, a bookkeeping change here, if, um, if that makes any sense. I don't know if anybody has any other questions about that.
Makes sense to me.
Thank you, auditor. Yeah, that's what I, the way I saw it too. Um, one note, the, um, Director Adine did indicate that all 800,000 dollars is from OPWC.
Oh, okay.
Money is a grant, and half the money is a zero-interest loan.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or, uh, comments on that closes, finance and personnel? Thank you, President Isley.
Thanks, Councilmember Crow. All right, we'll move on to transportation, and that's chaired by Councilmember Kotsis and joined by council members Crow and Claude Veltzer.
I missed my mute button there for a second. Um, President Isley, thank you. And tonight on Transportation Committee, we just have one point. This is the residential parking, the 72-hour permit. And so, basically, just to provide some history, um, it's probably about three years ago, this was a community, um, initiative that was, that was brought forward by a group of citizens that was searching for, um, solutions to not having to walk their vehicle every 24 hours, um, due to the, uh, the citywide 24-hour, uh, parking rule. So this is a permit that is, applies to certain streets in the city of Athens, and it allows, uh, people on those streets to purchase a permit that then allows them to leave their vehicle in the same spot for 72 hours. And so, moving forward, um, the reason that this, this discussion is, is happening, uh, tonight is that, uh, member Smedley received a, um, communication from somebody on the west side that was looking to see how it was possible to maybe add a street to the, um, to the, to the parking, to the parking program. There's no criteria, um, currently right now that would, would allow it to, um, you know, go through a process. And so, um, I don't believe personally that, um, I would wanna see one person on every street making the request, and then we just keep adding them. Uh, my understanding was, and looking back through some of the minutes, um, this program was, was designed specifically for streets that didn't have, um, off-street parking, um, at every, um, at every residence. And so, you know, at the same time, looking, uh, I know that member Smedley did have a conversation with Captain Harvey. He's not against the idea, and, and please, member Smedley, correct me, and I, actually I probably will lean on you a little bit more, because this was the only thing I really, I walked away from that conversation, uh, that you shared with me. Um, he's not against expanding the program. Currently, right now, um, we've had as many as 12 permits issued per year. Last year it was nine. Uh, in 2021, we have eight. Um, member Smedley, I don't know if there's anything additional that Captain Harvey, uh, communicated with you.
Thanks, member Kotsis. Uh, yeah, I think it's, uh, outside of the specific request to add this, this particular street on the west side, I think it might be valuable for us to talk about what is our process for evaluating the program? How do, is it something that we wanted to consider expanding? Um, and if so, what is our process for doing that? Is it checking in annually? Um, are we automatically excluding certain streets? And, and if so, what would be the criteria around that? Um, so I think before we say yea or nay on that particular street, I think, uh, it'd be important for, as you, to your point, we don't wanna be adding streets as requests come in. We kind of probably need to have more formal and systematic approach to how do we address, um, expanding the program, if that's what we wanna do. Um, and beyond the program itself, I was hopeful we could have a conversation too about looking at whether or not we're ready to expand citywide, um, the length of time where you can be parked in a, in a, in a single location. Right now it's 24 hours outside of that per- permit program. Um, and based on the feedback that I received from Captain Harvey, um, he'd be open to, to lengthening that to 20, or 48 hours. Um, and so I'd like, so those are two conversations, obviously. You know, the permit program, how do we manage that going forward? And then citywide parking, um, on turn.
Member Smed, oh, ma- uh, mayor, thank you.
Or if there's another council member who wanted to speak, I'm willing to cede my time and wait my turn.
Okay. Yeah, and, and I know this is a very, you know, just, I'm just putting this out here tonight, more, mostly to kind of gauge what council is, is thinking, if they have had any conversations about this. I have not. This is the first time that this has come forward, um, and, and it is about on an annual basis, because we did, it did go to ordinance, um, in December of 2019. Um, so we, we, uh, we have kind of reviewed this almost once a year for the last three years. Uh, member Claude Veltzer?
Uh, well, I didn't have an in-person conversation with anyone about this, but I think, uh, the timing of, of bringing this issue back is really good, because the, as, uh, member Smedley may, may know, there was just a kind of a Facebook blow-up about parking, uh, limitations of, of exactly these issues, the need to move a car every 24 hours on the west side Facebook page. And, um, people were saying, oh, yeah, council never does anything about it. So I was really pleased when you broached the subject, because perhaps we will actually do something about it. I have one question, and it's just because, um, I haven't studied that permit in detail. But when we issue those permits, are they issued only for people, only to people who live on those streets? Um, so that nobody else could park there and take up all the parking? Okay, good.
Mayor Patterson?
I think it's good to remind, um, those who are viewing tonight's council meeting that this started as a pilot, and that's why there was specific streets identified, and it was because one of the, a citizen really wanted to see this happen. Um, and so we deemed it as being a successful pilot and migrated into the world of, okay, we're gonna continue this permit process moving forward. So that's why there was only certain streets identified when the pilot began. The, the other thing is, again, to kind of echo, um, member Smedley, what you mentioned, and that is that Captain Harvey, who oversees parking enforcement, that, um, 40, 48 hours is certainly worth exploring. Um, and, uh, and if, it, certainly that would offer relief to people who are parking on the streets, if they're parking on the streets, citywide, um, to, to have that happen. Um, and then maybe taking this in steps, again, working with, with Captain Harvey, is to see if that is doable, and if that's doable, then we look to see about expanding the permitting process in the future. But I think this is something that needs to be staged as we go through, um, otherwise we might find ourselves in a situation to where we were many years ago, to where we noticed there was a lot of storage parking going on, and in particular on some of our narrower, close-end streets, which did become significant problems when it came to the passage of safety equipment, you know, fire trucks, uh, ambulances through some of these areas, uh, and not to mention all kinds of interesting things living under vehicles that were sitting there for months and months on end and not moving.
Uh, member Crow?
Uh, thank you, member Kotsis. Just wanted to read into the record, comment in the chat, uh, from, I believe, a Ward One, um, resident. Uh, "This is a big concern amongst westsiders. I'd like to see 48 hours for parking rather than 24 hours, and exceptions for some for the 72 hours with the permit." And, uh, the same, um, person does say that, that the, uh, they want to avoid storage parking that residents don't want. Finding the right balance is tough. Agreed. Thank you, member Kotsis.
Uh, yes, members, Smedley?
Thank you, member Kotsis. Um, the mayor's comments just reminded me a few other, uh, pieces of feedback that we received from, uh, Captain Harvey, which is that he, when I, when I, uh, presented this question to him, I asked him if it, if it made sense to expand parking to 72 hours, since that's what the pilot permit program allows. And his feedback was that 48 hours made sense based on his enforcement abilities. And, um, it had something to do with the, the, the timing of which his staff can address a problem, um, vehicle. And, um, based on his staff, staffing levels and the timing of which that he can, um, respond to a situation, um, a 72-hour parking citywide could see potentially a problem vehicle being in, uh, unaddressed for up to five days, just be- based on the timing of when staff can, can address it and tow it and all those, all those sorts of things. But 48 hours seemed doable. Um, and, uh, so that was that issue. And, um, also, you know, the, the whole, the, the reason, as member Kotsis, member Kotsis and mayor brought up, that the 24-hour limit was introduced to begin with was to address the storage parking. Um, and storage parking, obviously, is, is a situation where you have cars parked for a length of time, um, and they take up spots for residents who live in the neighborhood. and they take up spots for residents who live in the neighborhood. That's all that said, 48 hours is still a very limited time. So they would still need to move their vehicles eventually. But as mentioned, it does offer some relief for those who are still living in town and really not going in a lot of places, especially now with the pandemic. And so, it could be a happy medium for now. And I would still, and I would agree with the mayor, we would probably want to take steps to expanding our parking limits, maybe revisiting the process at which we expand the permitting program. If we first wanted to expand to 48 citywide, or, you know, evaluate and assess and review whether or not we wanted to expand to 48 hours citywide, and then see how that goes, and then maybe revisit the piloting program to see if we wanted to expand the number of hours, or the number of streets involved in that. I would be in support of that sort of timeline. And that way, we don't present too much confusion with residents as well. Hope that makes sense.
Yes, Member Fall.
Thank you. I would suggest also looking at zoning, meaning that there's really no reason why the Far East neighborhood has to have as short of a timeframe because they don't have as much pressure over there from people who are parking to walk to school or to uptown or something. A lot of communities deal with this by having alternative sides of roads. And so you can, you know, park Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and then the street cleaner comes through, so you have to park on the other side the other days. So that's another way of enforcement. But if we did a zoning with the outer neighborhoods being less intensive with the hours, that they can have longer hours, that would also free up some enforcement that would go into the other areas that might be more problematic. Thank you.
And so, and I just have one quick question, actually, maybe two. One is, you know, the thing that I worry about the most is a high-volume street. So I don't know if we have to have some sort of criteria that wouldn't have, you have like a certain level of cars that do not travel on that street. And that's, you know, there's that balance, once again, where, you know, if you do have more cars parking on the street, your speeds are going to come down. So there is some added value or benefit by having those vehicles there longer. The second thing, and this is actually probably for Chief Pyle, is where are we at with the license plate reader and the vehicle that was going to be handling that? That was supposed to be maybe speeding up more the process.
Yeah, that was part of the budget drawback that the auditor spoke of that we made last year, and we did not budget for it in 2021, predicting that our budget numbers would not allow for that kind of purchase and implementation. So for the foreseeable future, we would continue to mark, not on the vehicles, but on the roadway the way we have for them, since that one came out last year.
All right, so that's why I still saw the Jeep going around.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Member Grace.
Thank you, Member Katsas. That's one issue that is, I think, relevant if we talk about expanding from 24 to 48 or 72 hours, is the current mechanism for enforcement is to mark, like chalk the pavement and take a photograph of the car in the position. And that's likely to stay very similar for 24 hours. 48, 72 hours, I think reliability of enforcement is going to get a lot trickier. And we personally have had this situation happen, and I know other people have too. It's already a tricky enforcement thing. If someone leaves their home at 8:00 in the morning, and it was chalked the previous day at 3:00 p.m., but then they come back before 3:00 p.m. that day, park in the same spot right in front of their house, it could look like the car hasn't moved. But this is finding the right balance between preventing storage parking on some of these close-end streets. And like, I like Member Fall's idea of, you know, sort of creative enforcement, except on my street, portions of one side have a retaining wall, so you can only park on one side of the street. There's no option of parking up against the retaining wall that's on the other side. So, and we have residents on my street who very much want to keep the 24-hour parking ordinance in place because they remember when they could never find a place to park because of storage parking, and even are concerned about expanding to 48 because their part of the street has rental homes with 5, 10, 15 people all living in one building, and then other homes have no driveway, and it's just one person. So they want to be able to park when they come home from the grocery store or from work. And so, I just, I want to say to everyone here and to anyone who may be watching, it's not that this is an issue that council has not worked on or discussed or that the city administration, this is an issue that has come around multiple times in my time of paying attention to local governments in Athens, and I know many, many times before that. And so, and even the ideas of hang tags or for permitting, different things like that are tricky because do you issue those only to the property owner? Do you issue those to each resident who lives in a home? How many parking passes does a resident get? How do you ensure that a renter might not say, oh, well, I lost mine, I need a replacement, and end up having a few extras to hand out to friends? And so there, it's a complex issue, and I appreciate the staged approach. And I would encourage, what, maybe we need to do more publicizing of the permit process that we do have? Because there, you know, at most, we've had a dozen people take advantage of that. And so, I think, I think that's a really good option, and it's being minimally utilized. But looking at possibly zoning or expanding, adding more streets to that is something I would be in favor of. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson.
You know, I'll keep this brief because I know this conversation's been going on for a while. And Member Grace, I agree with you 100%. I firmly believe that this needs to be a process that we go through in a very, you know, smart, methodical, staged approach. And I'm compelled to tell those who are watching tonight that, you know, when we had, when we were under, and we still are, under a pandemic, but when we were under the pandemic and it was the stay-at-home order, council authorized the lifting of the 24-hour parking restriction because we knew people were, some were in quarantine, some were in isolation, you know? And we're in a real difficult situation here in the city of Athens, as across this nation around the globe. So I think that we just go, we do this smartly as we go through in phases. And I think that's the more prudent way to go. And again, we still are under a pandemic, everybody. We still have people who are under quarantine. We have people that are in isolation in their homes. And so I think we just be smart with how we move forward. So thank you, council.
Auditor Heck, I saw your hand, and I didn't know where to put you in, but do you have any comments?
That's fine, I appreciate that. Council members and the mayor should go first. I was sort of involved through my neighborhood association when this all came up. I would say that Joan Kornansky was the leader of that and worked with other people, including the administration and Captain Harvey. I'm all in favor of having a set of rules. There are some rules already set up that council did when they approved that project. Review would be good, and maybe you want to put together some kind of committee to include West Side, of course, but the Near East Side, any place elsewhere they feel, anywhere in town, really, that where they might deal with that. So I was mostly just going to say I would like to see that reviewed in the process and anything we can do to improve it. Even if we're only helping a dozen people in town, you know, what does it hurt us if parking enforce, if it's not an issue for parking enforcement to deal with and to move forward with that? And the 48 hours, it's just, parking can be tough around here. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Yeah, I will just close this out by saying I did, this was a few years ago, I had a conversation with Planner Paul Logan. He believed that he spent about 50% of his time trying to figure out where to park the cars. So this is not, this isn't a special situation to our city alone. It's always, it's always a challenge. And I'm just glad that we're able to still kind of continue to keep thinking about it and working on it and making adjustments as we move forward. So, thank you so much.
Okay. Thanks, Councilmember Katsas. We'll move on to City Safety Services Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Grace and joined by Councilmembers Fall and Claude Felter.
Thank you, President Isley. First, I would like to make a motion, I guess, do I need to? Or just, I just need to say that we need to amend the agenda of it for tonight and add an item to the agenda for the committee. And that is that we would like to talk about the fact that we will need to amend an ordinance from last year that is Ordinance 12020. And this ordinance was for the funding for getting the fiber optic capability, the lines and capability to Arts West. And I know, funding for this, we were working on doing as much as we could with some CARES Act funding to improve access to arts programming during this pandemic. And we just, we will need to be updating some of the financial information. S. C. Pyle, I don't know if you want to chime in here with some details on that as far as where we are or the details of what needs to happen?
Sure, sure. So last year, we, council authorized the expense of $120,000 out of $285 for the Arts West fiber project. We only spent of that $120,000 around $38,000 and change. That was for the government channel equipment. I don't remember what that thing was called, but all the bells and whistles, it goes with the Tricaster or something like that. And then, anything else we spent came out of a different fund. And so, spoke with Leanna just briefly, Leanne Woods of the auditor's office, briefly about this. And so, what we're looking to do is amend the ordinance to the corrected account line that we funded this year with $40,000, and that's a rec line, I think. I know Clerk Walker gave you the correct account line. It should be around $88,000, somewhere in that vicinity that we could spend to complete the $120,000. But we only have appropriated 40 so far. So the amendment would be to change the line for the remaining balance of the $120,000. And then, if we need the additional $48,000, we would have to come back for an appropriation as well to put that money in the correct account line.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. It's mostly bookkeeping to adjust which fund line our funding is in and what the ordinance says we're allowed, or which fund we're allowed to spend it out of for this project. But yes, it's good that this project is continuing to move along. Are there any questions related to the adjustment to the funding for Arts West? Okay. The next issue on the agenda is for the Washington County Jail contract. And this is something that council approves on an annual basis. And it's so that we have an agreement in place to allow our law enforcement officers to house inmates in Washington County Jail in the event that there is no space for them in the regional jail located in Nelsonville. And this is an agreement we've had in place, and we have in place with some other locations too, I believe. But Washington County Commissioners require that council approve their particular contract. And our current contract will be up at the end of March. So we just need to get this in process. And I have a draft of the contract. I don't know if that is last year's contract or if this is this year's contract. If it's, but the last email I saw was, we were waiting to hear specifically from Washington County, but we want to get the process started so that we have the ordinance in place to approve that once we're all ready for that. Does anyone have questions? Okay, seeing none. And our third issue on the agenda is moving forward with a generator for the city building and the attached LAB, the law administration. I know it's the prosecutor's office and the building attached via the walkway there. And this project would be for one, a single generator that would cover both buildings. And the recent power outage that I know caused some significant technical issues for individuals in that building, and even some lasting delays because of servers going down, things like that, sort of highlighted that this is something that is needed just for resiliency for local government. And I know that our administration has a draft, at least of a bid proposal. And so, we're going to be hopefully able to approve that. Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Grace. Yes, you know, if council or members, there was an incident that occurred behind the city building in the secure parking lot back in 2017, I believe it was, 2017 or 2018, where we had a couple transmission poles, one for sure, that went down. It led to roughly a three-day power outage in the city building. We did get a quote back then as to what it would cost. We looked at natural gas versus diesel generation. There's currently a diesel generator that powers the police department and that building. But it, as I understand it, you know, it's pretty limited in terms of what it powers. We did look, like I said, at natural gas versus diesel, but for the limited number of days per year that that generator needs to be running versus the cost for natural gas-powered, and as well as emissions. I think that's important to have this conversation because we are a city that's very conscious about our impact on the environment, that those days were very small in terms of having to be used. However, again, with the incident that we just had, you know, two weeks ago on a Friday at 2:00 p.m., where we had another extensive power outage, you know, citywide and into the county, where we had 18,000 citizens, dwellings, houses, residents without power, to include the city building. One of the things that happened, and this also happened back with the longer power outage, is when you've got power outages that are abrupt like that, city servers take a hit, a lot of the city computers take a hit, and, you know, that can lead to added cost and expense as well, things you don't think about, not only people time to get things rebooted again and get them up and going, but what the impact can be to equipment. To have a blackout or even a brownout is not good when it comes to electronics. This would allow, what we're requesting is a diesel generator. We're still waiting on the quote, but it would be a diesel generator that is able to power both the city building as well as the law administration building in its entirety. The, when we got the quote the last time, the only real change that we noticed was that the exhaust stack had to go, I think it was another 20 feet higher than where the generator is now laterally. So we're exploring this. We think that this is the most prudent thing to do, as you mentioned, as a resilience feature. feature as well as a cost savings feature, you know, when we have a lot of electronics that, you know, lead to a lot of people hours to go in and resetting things and fixing things, as well as potential damage to equipment when you have rapid shutdowns. Fortunately, things were able to be powered back up again with this last outage. I have to give a lot of credit to AEP for being able to get things back up and going again, anywhere from 12:30 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And then certainly Vorridge had took a little longer for Vorridge to regain its power. But all the same, this is something that I think we really need to do in the city. We we struggled last time, back in 2017, because of the cost. It was a cost issue. We feel now, in conversations with the Auditor's Office, that with the the refund that we received from BWC, this is a safety issue for people who are working in buildings, and all of a sudden the power goes down as well, to where we could potentially be using some of the BWC refund to cover the costs of something of this this nature.
Yes. President Isley?
Just a process question, and I would agree with you, it's a safety issue, but given the potential cost of it, does this need to go out to bid?
Yes.
Yes.
Chief Pyle? I I have a draft that I believe has been sent to the Law Director. I I don't know if that's been finalized yet, but that...
Yeah, so Andrew Chickie and I met with the Law Director today, and whenever the draft document, she's made her changes and will be sending it back to us for correction, then we're going to go over it again. Just a note, we've already appropriated the money, council already appropriated the money for this back in January, out of that BWC refunds money. And we think we appropriated enough, quite enough to cover any updated costs from 2017. And so what we realized is we didn't have council authorization to go to bid. So that's what this is, this request is for the authorization to actually go to bid and spend that money that that's already been appropriated.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Yes, Member Katsis.
Yes, and I and I just have one, you know, because I, you know, I think about this investment in this in this infrastructure, and then I think about all of the different arms of government that are located in a very small space. And so what I'm thinking is, and and these, I know this generator could be picked up and moved, is this something that, do we, do we already have one generator that supports the police station? I guess, I guess my, the only thing that I'm thinking about is, we put this here and then we move the police or the courts or something else gets moved, I guess the servers will always remain in the same spot, and that's probably the ultimate protection that you're looking for. But just just thinking about what, what we, where we may be with our, where our staffing may be located, you know, in the next 10 to 15 years.
Good, good question. S S D Pyle?
Yeah, so the the current generator on top of the lab was installed when the building was built in 1986, so it's 35 years old and counting, and and they can't get parts for it anymore. And that generator was sized only to provide power to the police server room, which was an add-on when we developed the server room 20 years ago, and the police dispatch center. So it doesn't supply power to the environmental controls, whole building electric and that kind of thing. So so this one is sized to keep both buildings running. So it's not necessarily portable, but if we did move offices out of the lab for some reason, if we build a new station or the 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 combined stations that we've talked about over the years, things like that, we could pick this up. You know, it costs money to move it, but you could move it. As far as the servers and stuff, so, yeah, I mean, it it's going to supply power to both buildings and keep the lights on and the heat on for both buildings. I think that was the gist of your question, wasn't it, whether or not we could pick it up and move it?
Yeah, I also worry if there's a splitting of of services at some point. I mean, I, you know, I guess, I guess, just thinking through this too, is that you will have, if you move people, other people are going to move in there. It's not like we're going to have an empty building uptown.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's just what I was thinking. I know there's been discussion about the police department possibly moving or court, although that seems way far in the future just because of of options. And so, and there's no way that the city building would be empty. So I think keeping power to that, both both locations is is a good idea. Mayor Patterson?
I I I should cede my time to Auditor Heck because I think she and I are on the same wavelength. Just to remind everybody, the Auditor's Office is in that building, the Tax Administrator is in that building, there's record storage in that building, there's the Law Director's Office in that building and all her staff. So you 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 mentioned this, and I agree wholeheartedly that if there was any movement of a department out of that building, we would replace that with likely other residents in that building, other city administration in that building. So that building's not going anywhere. Where tenants are could be moving in the future. So and we can have that conversation at a different time, but at this point, it's making sure that all of those who are tenants in that building, city function-wise, that they have the security of a backup generator when needed, as well as the city building, which is city council, it's the court system, and the city administration that is in the city building. So this is a critical piece of infrastructure that that, again, has been lacking for a long time. And just wanted to move this forward.
Yeah, just just one other note, if if we did develop the Southeast Regional Operations Center and FD, the Fire Department and Police Department moved into a center like that, the HQ generator currently is 80 kilowatts, and and if we did that, likely the old Fire Department building would be shut down and or sold, and and we could move that generator to, down to the site if we needed to take the newer one. So I mean, there are, there are plenty of options there.
Thank you. Oh, Kathy, Auditor Heck, did you want to say anything else other than, hey, I'm in that building too?
Yeah, no, that was, the mayor was right on track with that is, yeah, we we're also in there, and the current generator is for the, an area of the police department only. That pole that went down three years ago put us out of business for three days. That's a lot of time for us to have the entire office shut down, for one thing. And then it happened in the afternoon, I was there, and usually when you have a sudden shutdown like that, you lose all the information you've been working on, you know, for the day on your computer, and it's just not a great situation. And so, yeah, so so separating, you know, as the mayor said, there are other offices in that building and a lot of storage, file storage, between our office and the Law Director's Office, besides our actual offices. So aside from the police department that is, you know, on the bottom floors, so, yeah, what they have going now, you know, would would be for them. But, yeah, just don't forget, there's offices in both buildings, two buildings we're talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions related to to powering our our city buildings? Okay, that's all that I have on the agenda for this evening.
Okay. Well, thanks, everyone. We'll be back for our regular session next Monday night, and we will have...
Night, isn't it?
It it will be Monday night. Pardon me?
Are we, do we have council on pres, isn't next Monday a holiday?
No.
Okay.
We're having council next Monday night, and and, yes, we will be there. Okay?
All right.
And we're adjourned at...